Trustee Blower, trustee McGurran, trustee Young.
Administrator's updates.
None this evening.
Okay. Just go off and just.
I actually have two. First and foremost, I'm not sure if any of you saw the article by Denise Callahan in the Journal News of maybe 10 days ago regarding the use of one Ohio opioid monies. And we were the last item mentioned that we're using ours for block cameras. Well, she has followed up since then with all the entities saying, and this is an email that I got from Denise Callahan. Good morning. Mike Moser has issued a challenge of sorts to all county jurisdictions receiving opioid settlement funds. He is proposing you all pull your money with the county so a bigger difference can be made to help with the drug problem. He specifically mentioned the lack of treatment beds. Many of you still have money to allocate, and he noticed that fact from the article. I realize a decision like this would require elected official action, but I would appreciate a response giving me your general thoughts as to whether it's something you might recommend to your various boards. Thank you so much. With that being said, there have been a handful of responses. Most of the responses have been, we're considering our 26 budget. We need, we will take this under advisement. Some jurisdictions have responded. That doesn't sound, well, it doesn't sound like something we might, it sounds like something we might be willing to support, but we're going to need way more information than just Mike Moser thinks we should pull our resources. Now, keep in mind, we get maybe five to eight thousand a year. We currently have about thirty-two thousand. We have designated some money to the block cameras, especially if there's any out-of-pocket costs that the grants won't cover. We know that we can cover them for a period of years at no expense to our police budget. That's not to be said that we might not have some left over. But of our five to eight thousand, you have to consider the counties getting a hundred thousand plus annually. They have a much bigger pocket. And then I was at the township association meeting. I was talking about this topic with a handful of people. And there was one trustee from another township that said, well, that's all good and well, but how do we know our constituents will be treated? How do we know that there will be, you know, there's no county transportation? How will we ensure that those of us who live in a rural community, well, our residents would have access to this? So I think there is a bigger question, set of questions out there. But she is pushing for an answer, and I told her, well, we don't meet until Thursday the 17th. So we're going to have to wait for a response. So if you guys want to talk about it, if you want to, I don't know. I will be happy to respond.
Well, I'll give you my opinion. I think it's terrible to take tax money and put it towards people who can't get on the drugs because they want to be dumb enough to get on it in the beginning. It's like I told the guy I had the health department exchanging needles. Why? You know, in 10 years, we'll be free of all that. But that's how I feel. I don't like taking tax money and giving it to somebody who's dumb enough to get on drugs. We get the, you know, the other plans out there telling you not to do it, dare and all that kind of stuff. If you're still dumb enough to do it, you're the one.
This isn't really tax money. This is settlement money from the opioid company. Now, the only reason we are getting the quantity that we're getting is because we have our own police department. Entities like Riley and Morgan that do not, they may only get a thousand dollars a year. So we're getting a little bit more. I'm happy to respond in any way that you would like. I also told Denise, I said, I think you're asking the wrong, you really need to reach out to the elected trustees. I mean, I know the fiscal officers control the checkbook, but I think this is a bigger, broader.
I would not be in favor of giving what has been allocated to Ross Township to the counties to let them decipher. If we should get it back in the area we see fit to spend it. Our police chief has already come up with an outstanding way to use it. We've already said yes, and I think, I believe that's where it should stay is in our block cameras to protect people of Ross. I think, I think there's a good chance we'd give them that percentage, and the wide percentage would go to Liberty Township or some other township. And we wouldn't get, if we sent the eight thousand back, I doubt we'd get eight thousand in return. Right now, we know we're getting eight to nine thousand. I think we just stay right here at home.
I think the money serves the people of Ross Township better here than in Butler County. Although I think Butler County could maybe get a little bit of benefit because the two roads that we're starting with with block cameras are 27, which is a main road in Butler County, and those 128. So that may serve them, maybe not the way they want it to. But it'll definitely serve the people of Ross better, and I'm a hard no on doing that.
Okay. I will just tell her that we're going to continue with our plan to you. I think it will be interesting. I had a couple different trustees ask me to send them what Rob provided us, the justification for using it for flock. I think now that they've seen that we're using it for flock, I wouldn't be surprised if other entities don't divert some of their opioid money.
You still fight drugs.
Right. And Chief Gerhart had a pretty compelling statement, you know, with why you can use it, pulled directly from the MOU, from the opioid settlement. And I think we were able to justify those, the use of that money for those costs. I'm just curious. I think it'll be funny in the coming months. I think some other communities may be doing the same.
Just like Narcan, you know, you give it to a person, you save their life, and some again, you're coming back later on the afternoon to do it again. I'm sorry.
So if Denise called any of us.
Not me.
Huh?
She hasn't called me.
No, I'd say if she does.
We're just going to continue with the block cameras.
We're going to, our statement is, we're going to continue with where we are. We believe it'll serve the people of Ross as well as the people of Butler County in the way that we see best fit, and that's that.
Okay. My next item is just to give you a brief update on the saga of my computer. I took it to Columbus on Friday. They reimaged it. I came back. I plugged it in. I had UAN back. I heard a choir of angels singing. I plugged the external hard drive in, and it wouldn't read it. So I've spent another week, and I just got off the phone with Mark Smith, who remoted in and did some things. And I have access to all my files again. So he did a nice job. And I know that what he did today wasn't really in the scope of what he does. So if he builds us for time and materials, then it was time well spent. And he has me backed up to the cloud now along with all my files. And he's going to do a, do something to be, give me the ability to back up my UAN to the cloud as well, which I think would serve me better in a disaster recovery. God forbid, something happened to this building. If it's backed up to the cloud, then at least I know I'm covered. So I'm hopefully tomorrow back to normal. If you can define normal. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Alright, procedural actions. Tax budget hearing. Move for the adoption motion number 25-016787 to open the public hearing on the 2026 budget, tax budget. Any second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am. Just go off. She was reading for me.
All right. In front of you, you have a 59-page tax budget. This is the, at the lowest legal limit, meaning there are buckets that are put together. So it's not a line item by line item bucket, but that is by design. So what I did is I looked at the revenues through June 30th, and I looked at expenditures through June 30th. So I have 50% of the year to kind of gauge on, making my best guess estimate. Like I will say in the past, my predecessor did a really low-ball version of this. I don't, I try to make it as accurate as I think it's going to be based on the current year and then trending off the last several years. But again, this is still kind of the magic eight ball equivalent of what we want our tax budget to be for next year. But it is a good starting point for when we sit down and seriously look at it in the fall. I was able to get the project estimates for road from Paul. And I didn't think I put them in, but I apparently did because there are, you'll see footnotes from time to time through each section. And then at the end of, for example, on the general fund, on page two, you'll see a one in the footnote. And that's under transfers out. I'm estimating we're going to transfer out $200,000. If you go to the bottom of page three, it will define what the footnotes are. So overall, across the board, all four departments, revenues and expenditures, is really not any different than of the shape we were in last year when we did the budget, knowing that if we don't pass a fire levy, we're going to be in a major, we're going to have some major decisions to make regarding the fire department. So if the levy would fail in November, we're going to have to seriously talk about the budget. With that being said, when we, when we did the final budget for the 25 calendar year, we knew that the carryovers for the fire department were getting really low. And as of the end of '25, they will have expended all of their carryover. And they're, they will be in a deficit situation for '26. So if you look at page two of the general fund, the transfers out historically are just the fines and fees that we collect through the City of Hamilton Municipal Court. And then we give them to the police department the following year. For example, from '25, we moved $28,000. The reason why in '26 I'm estimating a significantly higher amount of $200,000 is because I believe we're going to need to put $75,000 in fire, the fire fund, and $100,000 in the EMS fund. That's if.
It doesn't pass.
Well, if the levy doesn't pass, then we have bigger, we have bigger discussions. We have to talk about, we still have the renewal on the table next year. We're not out of funds next year. It's just that we have a significant hole to plug. And at that point, we would have to talk about, are we shuttering one of the firehouses? Are we alternating? How are we going to do that? Are we going to reduce our part-time personnel and rely primarily on our full-time with us? Yeah, those are all the kinds of things that we need to be thinking about now and hoping and that it doesn't come to that. But in addition to move.
So that 200 would be no longer transferred out, assuming it passes, or if it passes?
Yes, if it, oh, well, actually, yeah, because if it passes, the new revenue would be collected in, the first time we would see it is March. And yeah, we would be fine. But it's a temporary Band-Aid. Now, I could advance it out. Advances mean we'll be putting it back. Transfer means we're just giving it to them. If we get further down into fall and we start to have bad feelings, we could change that 175 into the advance line with the hope that when it passes, it would come back. And if things go sideways, there are legislative things we could do to change an advance to a transfer. So it would just need a motion or resolution to do that. But there's a way to do that. But I just thought we should prime the pump and have the general fund know that they're going to have to, to foot. Now, that being said, the projected carryover for the general fund is still 1.4 million. So we have about three years of expenditures. And again, under normal circumstances, I wouldn't advocate for a carryover that high. However, knowing that road projects get more and more expensive every year, there's a pretty good chance at some point in our very near future, we're going to have to prop up the road department in some way, shape, or form.
So for the public, for everybody to know that carryover money is kept where and does what? No way of earning interest or anything like that?
Um, it's, it's. Some entities will not appropriate the money, and it's just kind of out there in your savings and your checking, just generating interest. In our case, I do appropriate it in the case that we would have catastrophic event. We wouldn't have to wait for the Butler County budget. We wouldn't have to wait for a meeting and then turn around and wait two to three weeks for the Butler County Budget Commission to say, yes, you're fine to bring that carryover money in. So when we do permanent appropriations every year around April, if there's money out there for general fund, I bring it over as if we're going to spend it, but it doesn't get budgeted to spend. I put it in contingency. It's usually just sitting there. So it's available to spend should we have a catastrophic event, but we don't budget it to spend, if that makes any sense. It's not part of our current year budget. So if the roof flies off and we have a $50,000 worth of expense, do we wring our hands or we say, well, we have it? It's in our carryover. We can use it.
In lay terms, is it earning interest?
Yes, it's part of the hybrid checking account.
That's what I wanted.
That's the answer that you're wanting. So basically, going through each one of these funds, there are five funds for the road department. And if you read the footnotes on those, you'll see where I've put 50% of 150,000 paving estimate for Brenda Drive is included in Fund 2021. That's the gasoline tax fund. The primary fund for the road department is the Road and Bridge Fund, which is 2031. If you read that, there is a note that says, where's the gasoline for 2026? I think that was more of a note to myself. And there's a culvert repair estimate. And I talked to Paul and realized there's not really going to be a culvert repair like we thought. But I still bumped up that line item just in case because he does typically have culvert repairs from year to year. And then the next fund, if we skip 281 and move to 2141, there's some curb and culvert projects and supplies. And then, and another one of the 2221, no, that's not, 2231 is the remainder of the 50% of the Brenda Drive estimate. So I've kind of broken it out. We'll pay for it however we can, which, but usually when we do a road project like that, we're paying it from several different, there is, the paving costs are being paid from several different road and bridge funds. But you can go through 2081, which is the police department. Chief Gerhart gave me several things he wanted me to put in the temporary budget. I made a notation that the dispatch fees are changing. They did provide me. It's gone up just a couple thousand dollars. It's, it's, I think it might have been 79 or 80,000 this year, and it's at 81, 81. So it's not moved a lot. He wanted to put some money in for some new uniforms, for some new badges that have seen better days, ammos, weapons, and money for tasers, and then money for cruisers. I will tell you, we spent the entire car repair budget this year in the first five months, trying to limp some of these vehicles along.
What are the transfers in of 100, police department?
Oh, okay. Well, what that is, where's the transfers? Those stinking badges. Sorry, can't, can't help it. Transferred in, there's 20,000 that we have coming in. That's part of the 200,000 out of the general fund. That is from the amount of money that we get from Hamilton Municipal Court and fines and fees. We estimate that that's going to be about 14,000 annually. Last year, I think it was 25,000 in actuality. So we, when January rolled around, Chief Gerhart said, let's put 20,000 in the police fund. Let's put five, or 2,500 in the new community events fund. And I, what I've recommended that we do for '26 is we frontload the community events and the K-9 fund. I think we're going to have some expenses with the K-9 unit that isn't covered by grants and things. And so we, we collect far more than what we estimate we're going to with those fines and fees. But we can't just bank on getting 25,000 in fines because those municipal court, they fluctuate. So we usually estimate it pretty low coming in. And then when it's higher, then we have a little latitude. And he, he agreed that we should continue to frontload the community events fund. And he liked the idea of putting a little money aside for the K-9 unit. That way, it's not a drain on his budget.
I was referring to page 23.
Okay. Page 23.
And the 2026 says 100.
Oh, that is the EMS. 2281 is the fire and rescue. So 100 and 100 into that one, 75 into the 2191 fire fund. We have two different funds there. The 2281 is primarily funded on contract services, what we collect for EMS runs, things like that.
2061 was, was, I thought you said 2281.
2281 is fire and EMS. 2191 is fire.
Okay, got it. 61 is what?
2161?
Okay, I got it.
Okay, are you good?
Yep.
Okay. The fire budget is, it's, as you can see, the estimated carryover in 2191, which is the fire fund, is $2,000. And that's scary. That's a scary number. That's with 75,000 coming in. So, you know, we hope and pray that the levy goes through, and we're still going to have to be cautious.
Has anyone in the township asked for an explanation of this? Because I know when, when the committee is quoting figures, they're quoting things. I don't know that, what they believe the expenses and all that are going to be, but this, this kind of breaks it down.
Yes, and I can share this with the levy committee. I have no problem doing that. I can actually just take the two sections that make the fire budget.
To say, here's where we are.
This is what we're estimating for next year. And this is our, and again, on the revenue side, I tend to estimate the revenue a little conservatively. And I tend to estimate the expenditures a little bit on the high side and kind of hope it creates a little cushion. Unfortunately, with the fire budget, I mean, I have, without, I didn't want to, we do generate a little more in actual, if you look at page 14, the top part of that is where the revenues are. If you look at our actual real estate collections, a million 93, a million 1, a million 134, a million. And then for 2025, I estimated a million 90. We're probably on track to collect a little more. A lot of times, you're collecting prior delinquency that gets collected, and you can't count on that. Sometimes you get some new construction, new construction. When a new house is built and it's picked up for the first time, there is a small increase in collections, but it's a one-time thing. You get it, it's like one big bump. And last year, we had quite a bit of new construction. So that million 90 may actually look more like a million 1. I mean, I know that's only $10,000, but, so I still estimate it kind of, I keep it low. And then on the revenue side, I've had to move some expenses. I've had to move quite a few things over to the EMS side because they had a larger carryover, but won't at the end of next year, so.
When will the, what you list as transfer in, transfers in, when would you suggest that be changed to advances in?
As we get going, I think we might have a feel for how the levy's being perceived. And maybe as a precautionary, maybe we take that 175 and just change it when we go to do the budgets in the fall. Make that an advance with a caveat that we know that should the levy fail, that will just become a permanent transfer to them. And I might have to get some guidance from UAN or the auditor of state on what we do. But I know that there are times when you advance money, and it turns out that there's just no way it can get paid back. So there's a way to legislatively correct that. So that's all we'd have to do. We pretty much go through, there are no other real big shocks and surprises once we start getting into the special revenue funds to the back, that Ross Town Center, TIF. Those are just things that, and those shouldn't, some of these should not have been included. Like, we have a couple funds out there, Fire Explorer. We really don't have an explorer program anymore. And I'm not sure if we can expend the money. There's small amounts. There are $400. Is it appropriate? Is it allowable to buy children's educational things that they would hand out to kids when they go to the schools and stuff? Would it be possible to buy supplies and spend that money down and get rid of it? Because then eventually we can get rid of those funds, and they don't have to continue to show up in the budget. There's just a couple things like that. There's a couple different funds that they just really need to go. I know we have Two Different Fish with a Cop, but we're no longer really putting money in the Fish with a Cop anymore. So we're, when we do the Fish with a Cop event, we're spending that money down until we can get it down to zero. And then eventually, that kind of thing will be just paid for out of the community events. But that's, the community event is specific to police. So there's just a couple, some strange funds that really kind of need to go away, but I don't know how to make them go away. And we have a couple different drug use prevention grants out there. And I believe those are specific to the SRO. So I reminded the chief to remind Officer Stappel that she has money out there for materials and other, or if they want to pay for training for her out of those funds, as long as it's allowable. So we have some things we have to do. But that's basically the, this is basically the temporary tax budget. I'm sure there was a page that summed it up, but there's not.
Page 52. What is, what is 2921?
Downtown Venice redevelopment zone plan. I.
They struck to, and they tried to implement the Venice. Oh. As a grant, I believe, and they hired Wendy. Came up with the overlay that was never implemented.
So there's still $2,800 sitting in.
Okay. So if we move forward on that, I guess we're going to talk about that later. Some point, they're going to use it or move it.
Can't move it. That's the problem with these special revenue.
Okay. So what happens?
Or we'd have to get a court order or something.
Well, for example, if you are going to nail.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Or if you were going to do any more consulting, we'd have $2,900 to put towards that.
It's always been allocated and.
Right. Unfortunately, these special revenue funds are very restrictive, meaning you can't move them to something else. You can't use them for other things. But sometimes with guidance, especially maybe from the auditor of state or the Ohio Attorney General, sometimes you can get an opinion. Sometimes if you just have something that just can't be spent, I believe there is a process which you can get a court order that will allow you to move it to the general fund. But they want you to do that very sparingly and under very few exceptions.
Why?
Because you obviously had a purpose in mind when you established the fund and the grant and then.
Okay.
So they just don't want you to be able to, well, it's kind of like when you have a bond improvement, when you're you're building a building and they want you to spend it down as close to zero as you can, and if there's a small balance, you're allowed to move it to your general fund, but they do that because they don't want you to amass funds and then.
Create money to then turn it back.
Yeah. So i- it's it's kind of government's way of keeping you accountable.
Okay. Anybody from the audience who like their questions?
Yeah, good talk.
All right, move for the adoption of motions twenty five dash zero eight eight to close the public hearing. Two thousand twenty six tax budget. Second, second discussion. Go call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am. Expedited legislation purposes. After consideration of the discussion during the public hearing earlier in this meeting and following the resolution adopted, the tax budget makes a temporary appropriation of funds and expenditures for the fiscal year meant in January the first two thousand twenty six. Motion option resolution twenty five, twenty twenty five dash zero four six, adopting the tax budget and making the temporary appropriation of funds and expenditures commence in January first two thousand twenty six pursuant to RC section fifty seven oh five dash one four and fifty seven oh five dash two eight and fifty seven dash five dash two nine and fifty seven oh five dash three zero and fifty seven oh five three eight. I need a second.
Second. Discussion? Go call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am. Discussion items. I see two addresses, three related damages and infrastructure of the sidewalk.
That Paul? Yeah, yeah.
I. Do they have?
Yes.
Okay. To be a nice. Out of. People plan for the rights. Whatever we need to do to get rid of. Don't have the right. Other emails. Sorry them for. And then we could, we could charge them for the removal. That'd be easier than you. And you could moving the tree. Nothing in here that I find it says we can present for the damage there.
So what actually was the damage? What? It's just something weird, so.
Hey, come on. And be. I apologize. But problem pump line that we repaired always treat. That was the only reason I brought it up was possibly set a policy to stop them from planting trees, so we manually have always have problems with sidewalks. Pump lines, you always have to spend time and resources in the trees back. But if anything by. Um, there when you're camps up in the street, we ended up out there. That was the only reason I brought it up.
We know who planted those trees. Can we find that out? That planted by the developer?
By the homeowner.
Does it, the homeowner physically went out and planted the tree? Homeowner?
I know. Craig Cloudy. Craig Cloudy was but the county planning commission went back and pulled out the plans, and there were no trees included in the plan.
Okay. Okay. Are you saying uh, that in the future it's likely that this is going to happen again throughout that area and?
Further line or side. But I was putting in a new subdivision over here.
And the old dude, of course, they have power lanes right in the ground there, but the they got cut the street back yesterday.
It's, I don't know how to stop it, but you know, you clearly have the right to go out and tell them you can't plant it. I hate to do that to people if they spend time, so they have something that. That was the whole. But say we had it. They expensive. Pretty, I don't know how many trees out there. Problems are going to last for a long. Violation.
So there's what on Longhorn, a couple hundred trees. Using. Of ten percent. It seemed like each house had about three.
I thought so.
There's a lot.
Do some though.
And if ten percent of them do that, that's twenty times that's going to happen. How much does it cost? How much did it cost to do what you did on thirty six oh seven Longhorn? That streetwalk.
So uh, I didn't, we didn't have a dollar. Eight and a half.
The labor time and.
Period. I didn't stop.
Could be five hundred to a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Okay.
The thing is that particular wall find claws where in their. Where we did find the claws and dig it up. Ground even. At least from here that wall there. There.
Seek out water.
Previously or what? That's why.
Especially like maple trees or leaping willows, they'll they'll go a hundred feet.
So one of the questions is, do we tell people we got to chop down their trees or their trees have to be come down or or you're already in violation?
Yeah, that's another thing when it tells somebody they can't plant one there. I don't know how you do it.
Past tense. Maybe you should start talking to all the developers and having put their claws, do not plant trees according to Ohio revised code.
I think putting it in a new one. Get on the way. And I'd like to know. That's you. And it. I'll say.
You see what? That's where, that's where you bring that complaint to the board and make a decision to go ahead and re- remove them. My my thought is if they're already in there, they're mature. At, and then again, when there's, there's nothing in writing that said we can bill them for, um, machinery hour, serial labor. At that point, I think we have to go to the prosecutor's office. They in violation of Ohio revised code, they plant these, and their negligence, they didn't check into it before they planted them in the right of way. I should the taxpayer in our our road department budget eat that problem? Does the negligence something hold over?
Who's fixing that?
No, you would, you wouldn't, but.
Yeah, you don't. Why should these guys pay for somebody's or tree?
My property taxes, your property taxes.
Correct.
Pay for fixing their problem because they're in a problem. That go out because their trees are are encroaching on a, on a pipeline. Is it, is it a hard plastic? What is it? They're getting into a hard plastic, not core hit.
They find a hole.
Okay.
Don't break a bike.
Hey, they're moving sidewalk.
Well, yeah. Look at it. Sometimes when you put in a new driveway. At the end lane, it'll come up through blacktop. So referencing Ohio revised code in these sections. And is the newsletter already published?
Yes, and it's printed.
It's out.
Okay. Well, there's not gonna, I guess the next one is Paul. I I definitely think we should put it in the newsletter. And and that's, that is not Ross Township Resolution. That is ORC. You know, so.
Against each line?
I mean, it's I think quoting quoting fifty five twenty nine eleven. Um, and maybe even putting the effective date of seventy three, so this is twenty seven.
Well.
Fifty two years old.
We'll have to work on birding closer to the time because people might be skeptical. Why don't you come up with a permit then? Issue permits?
We don't have our own zone.
Does it require zoning or just a permit? I mean, these permits vendors for patient posts.
I'd have to go to, does that go to the county? I mean, if it goes to us, I'll, I mean, for me personally, I'd say no.
And that's what.
No, I'd do that. Don't tear up our stuff.
So I think we would need to go.
Yeah.
The Crown did informational piece not only is to cite the revised case, but it was either why township has decided to.
All right, so we had to come up with that now.
Paul, on the one that says, uh, revised code fifty five seven one fourteen allows the trustees to remove any obstruction on the r- on the road right of way for a broad number of reasons that applies to county roads only. Trustees would need to declare an object, a nuisance. That's what you were referring to earlier. Okay.
That's just.
Right. Right, yeah.
You sidewalk.
Yeah. Um, so then what? What do you consider a nuisance? The potential of it causing a problem or the likelihood of it causing a problem? Yeah.
You gotta do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean. Think we, I would think they were gonna.
Yeah.
Be in the right. That. Want to stop it.
Yeah, sure. Are those, are those, uh, Bradford's up there?
A lot of them.
That's all the.
In Ohio, holding against Brad's repairs for being a.
Ready for repair. He.
Yeah.
Easily.
Lonely expressway.
So those are definitely.
But we have standing to do something. Okay.
So let's take a something later.
Uh, Paul, aren't you required like once a year to treat the noxious weeds?
We can.
Yeah, I mean, we spray.
Well, are they?
Not congrass and all that stuff. Yeah, we could go around and spray all of it.
I mean, they're truly a noxious weed, not an invasive.
Yeah.
Basically, if you look.
But not a noxious weed.
It's an invasive species.
An invasive.
On the nine.
On the roadside, yeah, everywhere.
But today is planting them in the wind blowing.
Like seeders. Can't remember the seeders though. All right, the Venice mixed use overlay. Did we send out a letter yet?
Uh, I don't think the letter was sent out. I I think last time it was here for critique. So anybody wants to critique? Please do.
Not only the content, but who exactly is receiving the letter? Leave any boundaries for for areas you're considering to include in the overlay district. Which I believe David Fair said that that was really step one.
To declare where the potential district would be?
Yes.
Okay.
As to who's going to get the letter.
Do we have to, do we have to define that first before we do? Or can we say, okay, we know, you know, these people, let's just say these people on one twenty eight are going to get, or would be potentially part of it? We need just one of those people to say, yeah, I'd like to forward with that?
Um, yes, I believe that's what the.
Okay.
Just one person?
Think to move forward with it? To to say, yeah, I'd like to.
Thank the thought of that.
I I like the thought of that kind of thing. Um.
Yes, that's part of the issue. The township cannot
Yeah.
initiate it.
Right. But we can send the letters as to why it's being considered here, and if somebody's interested, then they can can kind of be the impetus of 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 starting it, and then we can go from there. So do we have to declare precisely the the boundaries of the district before a letter goes out, or can we say, well, we know you know, we know these guys, these houses, these properties would be in it. Just see if anybody is interested for we.
I think we're looking from twenty seven down to one twenty six, so that was, that was the length.
Guess we can say whatever we want, but yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Are we allowed to, I mean, is that something we can do?
Oh, I would think so.
Okay. Everybody read over what written there and
I did.
Do we have any?
I had a little angst about the line that said, let's last sentence of the third paragraph. Uh, that they aren't left to look at or live next to a structure that they may see as unappealing. Everyone's opinion about what is appealing unappealing. And.
Okay, subjective that they may see know, would be like looking at art.
I it, that was just the only thing that I didn't know.
Okay, the.
Something better could be.
For for clarity, the sen- the the sentence reads, the suggestion of an overlay district is just an option for residents to use if they want to keep the charm and aesthetics of an area that they live in within certain guidelines, so they aren't left to look at or live next to a structure that they may see as unappealing.
Good way of stating.
Um, I I guess the wha- what's behind that is it's sort of a, I'm trying to make it a soft ask, like, you may find it unappealing. Maybe Julie doesn't. I may found it unappealing and face like, boy, that looks great. Um, I don't know. I'm up for a better way of saying it, if there's, if there is one. But in certain ter- and and in certain terms, we, they need to know that I can't remember who called it, the concrete monsters down there. It's something we did. Um, most people think that's unappealing. I would, if I lived next to it, I I, that would be my opinion.
I hear, I heard plenty of comments about it when they're putting it up.
I just wonder saying that, you know, next to a structure that doesn't meet particular standards.
Community standards.
Community standard, yes.
Standard.
Standard. The. Any other, any other thing else?
When a doctor adds you, as. Good now.
We, we can change, we can change that, that last little part. Yeah, you can change it to whatever you want, on there, whatever that is. Long, as, longer we get that sentiment out that. This is the only way to do anything. If you don't like the way it looks, this is our only, this is our only way to have influence over what might be there, and it's just influence, it's not. It's not a, you know, it's not like we can. Change the zoning or anything like that. But they'll listen to us if we have something adopted in place like that.
All right, so we can declare our district. Or put it in.
Now, we originally had, I think, it's going down one twenty eight, and there was some, there was some, uh, some area on that original. Overlay that went down, or went, let's see. West on. One twenty six a little bit, didn't it? Like up to the hardware store, maybe, or something like that.
Denit area?
Yeah.
Including, like, the offshoot streets, like Sunshine and. Or is it just the main drag? It almost would be better if you had a map and you could, with the parcels on it.
Yeah.
That you could.
We had one in the last meeting, you know, here.
There is a function on the auditor's website that will allow you to. Declare a radius, and then you can export all the parcels that are involved, and it gives you a mailing addresses and.
Hey, Scott.
Boom. Does Paul need to be here anymore?
Uh.
Are we done with that?
I don't. Do what you mean.
You, you're being just.
We're not gonna talk anymore about it, then.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul. So this is where we're talking about. Going down one twenty eight. It's a little bit on one. Play high.
Play high, yeah. This would be one point six.
Yeah, yeah, so it could go up. It went up just a little bit. Find out where that.
Right, direct cleaner, used to be where the direct cleaner.
Here's the engineer's map, if that gives you any.
Sort of the.
It's like, it would be quite as far as with the Venice, uh. Building as they got the corner.
Yeah.
Wouldn't you, wouldn't you want to include that, though? That's a potential business district in there.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if you have an opportunity to incorporate it in.
That's, but I, I, I would say that should go up to, what is that little street that crosses? That crosses one twenty six.
Right, right.
That first street, no, before that.
That connects the main.
The little, the little street.
Street is on there, is it Main Street?
Oh, Main. Yeah, that'd be right here. Main Street's right here.
Okay, there's Main.
Cross Street.
Cross, okay. Goes from Cross and Maiden. I don't. Almost talking about Sunshine Drive and.
Oh, I didn't know if it.
And those, tha- that's all residential back there. Um, Larry's all, all residential. Um, Mardell's all resi- well, Mardell runs over the school road. All of that's residential. And if business, if business is not on one twenty eight, I, I really can't see people putting business back on Sunshine. You know.
What do you get, zoning change?
They can, but. I, I just, I, I don't know how. Far reaching that needs to be. Up for discussion, and just, just an opinion.
Well, just go, just go back to the property lines of what's on one twenty eight, that's all.
Mm-hmm.
The bad part of it.
Mm-hmm. And I think you probably should include the area that they did near it, which I believe would be.
Is that Meadow Brook?
Meadow Brook. Do, do you remember, Keith, what goes up the Maiden?
I do not.
Is that the, does the cornerstone, is that within the cornerstones area? The cornerstone between Cross and Maiden? Or? Cross and, uh. Play high.
See, but it would hurt to take it all the way to. Um, now you're just talking one, one block, make it up to Maiden.
And it's a small little block.
Yes.
Right there, you got, can see. Probably keep that if somebody wants to come in and grab that.
What?
Like, somebody wants to come in and.
Yeah, we have, we have a copy of it, but actually, this is the newest, latest and greatest.
Let's say up the Maiden. Um. Now going. Going east on one twenty six. Uh, down to the, is that the CNC lounge, or going down to, is that? Lark, the first street that cuts down there?
Yeah, you got Gunther, H. Street next to CNC and then Mark.
Okay. Is there anything for there?
Here's Gunther's right here. Good.
So it's already, it's already business.
Yeah, your, your business all the way. Way to the motel and CNC lounge.
Yeah. So if it's within the overlay district, even though it's business, you can still. I don't want to use the term regulate, but you can still have the influence and say, okay. Gunthers want to build a, a retail, uh, bookstore there. Then they can. Do it, but it has to be within these guidelines.
Fair. That's definitely.
Um, if CNC or what, is that, is that hotel that's down there? That part of CNC, or is that some, is that a different business?
You know, honestly, I don't know if it's, if it's the same owners or not.
Okay. It's a drive through.
So if they, if somebody wanted to put a hotel there or update that hotel. He would have some influence over what.
Aesthetic.
That would look like, so that it's not. Dumpy looking or whatever. So I'd include that.
Okay, yeah. Good idea. Going down that far.
Hey. You think? Right.
So. Would, would it just layer the boundary tonight? Make it a motion?
So the boundary down to Lark?
Or we?
Maiden, Maiden to Lark on one twenty six.
Yep.
One twenty eight, what's the northern? Is the intersection at?
If we say twen- if we say twenty seven. Then same thing, we still have some influence over what may happen in front of, on the front side of, uh, the Watson property there. So that's the first time I've called it Watson. And then down here to, uh. Twenty six.
So would it be, would it behoove to have the list of potential? Property addresses?
Yes.
And then have the letter and approve everything as to form?
Yes, because I would want each individual trustee to sign the letter.
Okay.
So you don't need to.
Um, I have the mailing list that's used for the newsletter, however, it just says to resident. And this does need to be initiated by a property owner. So I will have to take a next step to, uh.
County website.
That the property owner lives at the. Property. That's not rental property. But, so it might take me a little while to get them.
Those are obtainable on, than the public county website.
Yes.
For sure. Right, so change a little wording there, include all those properties, and let's just see if somebody, there's interest.
How, how far south of one twenty eight?
One twenty six. Or do we go down to, U D F's already there.
Correct.
Um.
Little strip mall, we're center Mass Arms, and that's what it's at. And the con- southwest concrete pumping and.
Morgan Lane. Probably about as far as you need to go. That'll include that little car dealership on the right going down. Um.
One twenty eight.
Burwinkle's.
Angelo's.
Angelo's, Center Mass.
No, not a bar, just, I'm just taking it to the county yard. On that way, could, to include if anything happens, set up to the. As far as.
Yeah.
If you wanted to stop at Morgan Lane, or you want to go another. Half a mile or less and all the way to the county yard.
It really doesn't, okay.
If it does not, then. Stop on that point, wherever you, wherever you'd like.
Kind of makes sense.
Okay.
Where we have to.
Makes sense to me.
Have to stop.
At the beginning.
Okay, at the beginning.
Okay.
Where we stopping at one twenty six or Morgan Lane?
Or going all the way to the county line.
Oh, okay.
And to do it, right, and we'll do it.
Go big.
All right, stand on. So we declared, so you want to make that into a motion?
No.
She has to get the paperwork to include the addresses.
Okay.
And then we'll be able to do that.
Next meeting.
Probably at our next meeting.
All right, then, anything from the board?
Or the hype.
Not me.
Public participations. Now, young man, you can ask me a question you want to ask. I'll be here. Come about the trees, I'm assuming it's always the street tree. Tree in the sidewalk. Uh, the cities of Hamilton, Middletown, throughout the state of Ohio, they've become tree cities. Have to comply with certain standards, become a tree city. You look at that, that might give you some structure as to what those cities can control. The trees that are on, they call street trees. You look at B Street when they redid that, near the side of the bridge, they planted all kinds of trees, but they're only gonna grow twenty feet tall. Number of. Ability lines up there.
Mm-hmm.
They tell you what kind of trees you can plant. I know this isn't a city, but you might hit some direction from the structure of the, called tree city.
But in my research, I did find entities that do have street tree policies, and those policies often include an extensive list of approved trees.
Right.
Uh, it gets into the whole permitting process. We currently, other than requiring door to door vendors to come in here to inform the police department that they're here. Uh, I don't even really know if you can classify that as a permit. We do not have any sort of permitting. Process. Uh, so it would be up to the trustees if they wanted to allow street trees, yes, there are street tree policies that we could use as a template.
Township, you stood up. Very few others has kind of township, I'm going to call it, no help. I'm just saying there, there is a, a list of things that tree cities do control.
Yes.
But we not be able to do that.
But you could, it'd have to be a tree city, but you might run, find some things in there that.
Concerned is mainly is a tree planted in the right of way creating havoc with the. Water pipes.
Right.
From the cell pumps. Matter of, to me, no matter what kind of a tree you have, you follow suit with a tree city. But routes are still gonna be there and cause a havoc on that pipe. Being expensive to me and you every time we have to go repair.
I just, you were struggling with what to do.
Great idea.
You might find something within the tree city.
Structure.
Heard you.
Okay. Moving action. There any further, there's just further discussion to come forward? He had nothing, he had nothing. Move for the adoption, motion twenty five D X zero eight nine. For the adjournment of the work session, I need this motion, second, sorry.
Second.
Discussion. We'll call him.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blowers?
Yes.
Trustee Young.
Thank you for coming, the two of you, we'll see you again maybe August seventh, two thousand forty five. It's the. Four, very received for you.